Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee Meeting of October 8, 2019. At this time, I take a motion to open the meeting.
Don't move.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank East Bridgewater Cam or EB Cam for always homing our meetings. We have Sergeant Peterson here from the East Bridgewater Police Department.
Excuse me just for one second, please. I wanted to open the meeting this evening by taking a moment of silence for the tragedy that's happened at the Ebbington Public School District. An entire family went through a horrific event over the last forty, twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Two nine-year-old twins, an eleven-year-old daughter, a boy and a girl nine years old, and a mom and a dad. I would like to take a moment of silence for the Ebbington Public Schools and their If we could do that, please. I have spoken with Superintendent Schaefer. We, actually, Dr. Williams had helped us out yesterday, and we sent up two of our counselors out of the Central School. They went up to Woodsdale Elementary School for the day. I have spoken to Mr. Schaefer. We've offered him more help if they need and the support as much as they need from here on going forward. I do know that he did say that the Skati family was very active in the school community, so it has touched the community, and I'm sure that the first responders and all of the support staff and the schools have been affected by this. These tragic events happen, but this is where schools rise to the occasion for why we are here and what we do on a daily basis. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sergeant, thanks. Sorry about that. I think you're right there.
Good evening.
Might have to use that mic.
I'm Bill Patterson. I'm fortunate enough to work with a team of outreach officers who can, over substance use, sort of outreach to the town of East Bridgewater. Officer Cattori, Officer Randall, Officer O'Brien, myself, do some sort of mental health outreach team. And we are part of the Plymouth County Outreach, which every town in Plymouth County, every town police department, Kiertoor, State University, have outreach offices. And we like to go out and respond if we hear about an overdose, stay with each other, and we don't offer services to the person that suffered the overdose and to their family and friends, recovery services, treatment options, support, likely within twelve to seventy-two hours. We work closely with EB Hope, which I've been involved with for many years now, a great organization. We have partnered up with them, some local businesses, and now the town, to provide another service to help with this epidemic, is an opioid rescue kit. It's called an Narcan Box. Inside the box, there's two doses of nasal Narcan. There's a rescue breathing mask, there's instructions. This is meant for anybody to open up, to be able to help someone that's suffering an overdose. We spoke with the Selective, and they have voted unanimously to allow these in all of the town buildings. I've spoken with library directors. It's going in soon after the news and training. It's going to the community center, the other town buildings, and now we give presentation to the school committee and the administration. We met a couple of weeks ago and explained the program, and we'd like to put it on all schools. Not, we're detecting an overdose in the school, but you know, there are a lot of functions here. This also works on prescription drugs. If they're prescription, somebody has to take them any, whether they're abusing them or accidentally, this will happen. Okay, Narcan is readily available. Anyone of us can walk into CVS, prevent the cat, and get a prescription for this. It's relatively harmless. It's taken out of the score to see notices. We've been trading it. People have actually inhaled it with no side effects. Second is counter in overdose. We've also seen, you know, not just your heroin, they expect no pneumonia, but recently has people that swear they smoked some marijuana, but was raised for something, they were going to do a full B-ophioretic overdose situation and had been revived through CPR and not fatal. So, we have the last present the program to you. Give me a question, or get announced to the wall. It's not blocked, so it's accessible to everybody. Again, it's grant partnership community hope is paid for by then. It'll be stocked, and we'll check it out. If something's used, we will be replacing it.
We have, Sergeant Patterson came down and met with me. We talked about it. I think it is something that we should put in our buildings. I think it's not just for, I don't look at it for our students and having an overdose, although it may happen. I'm looking for, as Bill said, that our buildings are used constantly for anything, and parents come in, and community members come in, and people from outside the community come in an awful lot, and if, God forbid, something happened to somebody, we may have the cure.
No, I look at this as AEDs now. You know what I mean?
And that's where we would put it, right next to the AED.
Like, it is. It's almost like a necessity of, you know, you need an AED, you need this.
Would it be a one-for-one where we have an AED, we'd have an Narcan Box?
Well, we're, right now, because we have one.
I'm not sure what the gray covers would.
I would think of, I mean, in doubt, something we could address. That's absolutely something we could address, one number of floors. I think right now, the populated places, or most important places we got in the community you want to tour, and that's where public seems to hungry, especially the functions out now.
And same thing at the Mitchell School.
Mitchell School and even Central School. If someone sees an open building in their crisis, they're going to go to the closest building and ask for help, whether it's this, out of town, I mean, they're going to go and ask for help.
So, is there one person in the town that's in charge of replacing the Narcan when it expires?
Indeed. Oh, my team.
Sure.
We'll check them. It's usually good for about eighteen months. We record the dates. We know where it is, and we'll check on it. Period art, we'll check on it. Obviously, if someone from the staff sees something out of place, call us, and we'll take care of it.
Well, more likely than not, you would know, because a call would go through, or you would know if it got you.
My only concern is kids fiddling with the kit.
That was my thought, about where we put them.
Well, that's what I think he's saying is, it's just like the AEDs. We have not had an episode or an event where somebody has needed the AED or has opened it and tried to use it. It's a rarity that we see that. I haven't seen a pulled fire alarm in a while. And I do, and we haven't seen that. I think, I think in today's day and age, especially with school shootings and things like that, I think kids are starting to understand. When you yell "fire," people are coming in, and you better get down, because they're not going to say it twice. And I think our kids going through the trainings that we are offering, and I know that we have more Alice training coming, and we're going to do some things with the students as time progresses, and the more we get, with our police department and fire departments getting in here and running through those types of drills, I think people understand, and our kids understand. It's not something to be fooled with, and if it is, like Sergeant Patterson, you haven't seen any bad, you know, if the police have used it and they've been doing with a stun gun. Hurts, but.
Maybe a dog bite.
Yeah.
We have these up, a couple of Abe shops, the mobile station, two other businesses coming online with us as well. And they've been up for several months, and it's been.
That's awesome. Great, and sound, but awesome.
It is. The best outcome is just keep coming in eighteen months, and we replace the Narcan before it gets fired.
I would make a motion to accept the Narcan kit.
So, in each of our building right now, all of our nurses have the Narcan kit with them.
Oh, good.
So, it's already here with our nurses in case of that emergency, just like the EpiPens. We have them, we have generic EpiPens that we get every year from our doctor, prescribed to each of the schools and at the nurse's office, so that if in case a child does not have their EpiPen on hand, we have it.
And we'll discuss some training with the administration too, as far as figuring out some extra training. I'm sure there's a number of people in this building who see CPR training, possibly not being trained at all, but if we need to bring it up to a certain level, we have some resources that we can help with.
I make a motion to accept those overdose kits.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Thank you. Thanks. So, the Student Opportunity Act, as the materials are enclosed, John and I have been paying close attention to the monies that are moving and they're lobbying very hard up on Capitol Hill. It's passed one, it's passed the Senate, but it hasn't passed the House, so we're waiting for that. The student enrollment, as you know, has to be in by October 1st. Our enrollment is there, has been uploaded, and all schools in the Commonwealth have been uploaded. You can't appeal to wait. It's got to go. So, after the enrollments are all done by DESI, and audited, and everything else that they're going to do with DESI to clear these numbers, that's when I believe that we'll start to see the actual Chapter 70 funding. We did see, a note Robert Hatch from DESI got out to everybody. He does the Chapter 70 formulas. He did send that, send an email that just said he feels that we're still on line to be where John Shea had showed us last year, where he thinks that we should be over the next couple of years.
But what is our enrollment issue?
This was, it was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand? More?
No, enrollment.
Oh, enrollment, twenty-two-ten.
So, it's down a little bit.
Down. Mm-hmm. And, but, we're seeing, and looking at the births and the new houses that is coming in and people buying houses, I did ask a question at the town the other day, that the births are up in East Bridgewater. So, that means five years from now, we'll see, or it could be three years, whatever, the births, I don't know what the dates were, but the births have gone out.
Did you say twenty-one-ten or twenty-two-ten? Twenty-two-ten.
Twenty-two-ten.
And we were like, twenty-two-forty-six.
Yeah.
Yes, that's flat.
Yep. The Boiler Project is on time. The Commissioner, they have commissioned the hot water tanks last week. On Thursday morning, they're coming out to commission the steam, the steam units on the boiler. They put the breach in the chimney. That is ready to go. The Commissioner was out, then they have another state inspection. We have a meeting at eight AM on Friday morning at Central School. They will be on time. We will have heat for Columbus State Weekend, which Wilkinson had promised us. So, we're on time, under budget, which is great. There will be a few tie-ups or some loose ends that they will tie up over the month of October, but most of it is testing and then covering the pipes in the steam room with, you know, they used to do it with asbestos, I guess insulation, now it's something else. I don't know what it is now, but they will be covering all the pipes. But they leave the pipes open at this time to see if there's any leaks or anything until the commissioning has been done, then they will recover with an insulation. But they fired them up the other day, and we had heat. The Central School didn't like it, because it was one of those warm days last week. It gets very hot over there, but they had to fire it up, and they had to close the windows and every, and the doors to see what the temps were in the room, so.
Timing is everything, right?
And it, and it was working. The Central School Roofing Project, the update, as we've been accepted, we are in the queue. Brian Kylie and John Shea are going to represent us at the district at the upcoming MSBA meeting. We have sat with the new town administrator, who I'll be inviting to the November meeting for him to meet and greet with you. He's been busy, so I didn't want to get on his plate too quickly. We also, John and I met with Brian Kylie and had a phone conference with Tony Olivia, who is our, who's our, from TMA Consultants, he's our OPM on this, and we, there was something that John and I and Brian Kylie picked up that we were approved at town meeting for, I believe, ten thousand upwards.
Fifty thousand.
I'm sorry, fifty thousand. But the schematic drawing was to come in at ten, and then we were, so we were at thirty-five thousand at one point, and now they said we'll add eighty-six hundred dollars when we have to cut the roof open, which they'll be doing in the next month or so, to see what damage is there, what we need to do, this and that.
Let out some of that good heat now.
Yeah. And John and I have asked for clarification, that if the project didn't pass by the town, do we have to pay for that eighty-six hundred dollars? We just received an email a few minutes ago, I don't know if John has seen it, but they will have to eat that cost. But we've asked for that in writing before we, before I sign on to the project, because it's eighty-six hundred dollars or ten thousand dollars, doesn't matter. It's money that we told you what we had. This is what the town approved for us to go forward with this, to check on, you added this because it just comes, you know, what they're saying, it just comes with it because I, we have to see what's underneath the roof. Well, this is the money that we have. This is where we're at. So, so far, so good on that. And John is going up a couple of weeks. Yes. So, hopefully, we'll get in the queue, and what they do is they just ask us, does the town look like it's going to go forward? You have the money to do this in the schematic design. Tony will be there when they cut the holes in the roof to see where they're at, and then the MSBA will say, we'll send their people down, and John and Brian will talk to them about the project. Just like the Boiler Project, we have three thousand pages of who's in charge of what, and how it goes, and how long it's going to take, and when we should get it done, and but, so far, so good. But I'll let you know on Friday though about the Boiler Project. So far, so good. I hope that there's no hiccups, because my office was cold today, so maybe they could send a little heat over from Central School.
John, you play.
John won't let me turn the heat on, so.
I'll do it.
But I think they, I put this under the superintendent's corner, because I think it's valid, and I think that this person deserves their own space. About two weeks ago, Mr. Ponti, Ray Ponti, their band director, jazz director, music director, just about everything director here at our music department, came to me and sat down with me. It was not an easy conversation for him to have. He had a heavy heart to discuss it himself, and his intentions of moving forward and retiring this year, and we had discussed it. He said, let me think about it over the weekend. I did have a conversation with him in between that time, and you can see the letter that he has written. We had a conversation. He came back to me on the following, I think Monday, because he told his EB parents last Tuesday night, I believe it was.
Thursday.
Us Thursday's parents and the kids, and he wanted to tell me before I went out, and I said, do you want me to announce this at the school committee meeting? He said, yes. So, I'll accept the retirement letter. I accept it, because it's the right thing to do. I don't want to, because he's such a good guy, and he's done such a great job with the music program, and I think we've worked well together since I've been here, and I think he's worked well with everybody else, but I think that he and I have worked well together, and he's a gentle soul, and I wish him all the best in his retirement, him and his family.
So, I've had two conversations with Ray, one Thursday night, and one actually today, and of course, expressing how incredibly sad I am that he is retiring, from a professional school committee parent perspective, but extremely happy for him personally. And I just want to say publicly how grateful Ray has been for the support. He was extremely complimentary of how supportive you have been whenever he has come to you, and of the program, and of the growth of the program, and you know, as I said to him, I hope he'll be involved in the, you know, why he announced early in the transition, and getting everybody in the right replacement spots, because our program is growing so well, and this being my first year really involved in it as a parent, what a program it is. What a great group of kids.
And the parents that are involved in it.
Can we vote to reject his request?
I already tried that with him.
I'm not sure if you have that authority.
I'm sorry, I know there's a lot of sad kids, and I will miss him.
I think everybody, I think it's, you know, it's one of those people that you know who he is. You know, he walks, he's a gentle soul. I don't know any other way to explain it. He's very gentle, but I have said often to Dr. Williams, when we walk around and we looking in classrooms, whether it's here at the high school or the middle school, the Mitchell School, or the Central School, the way he is in his classroom is how every person should teach and instruct. We have seen kids blowing on a saxophone, and I'm sure that Mr. McPartland and Deb Dupre, you've seen it at the Mitchell School, doesn't always sound like music, or what is it, Hot Cross Buns? It could be all over the place, but for somebody to keep everybody going and knowing and keep looking at that student to say, keep going, it's okay, it's going to come, and every year since I have been here, I have asked him to call Andrew and Deb down at the Mitchell, or I'll go down and send the kids down and play for the younger kids, so that they can see, what you do today is just in preparation of what you're going to do tomorrow. When they watch those kids, you can see them light up to say, oh my God, this is where I'm going to be. And the other thing is when Ray plays with them in his small jazz, when they do it for the, it's really neat to watch the kids, because he plays with them and they watch him, and it's fun. So, he makes learning fun. He instructs in a way that we'd love every teacher to do, because he's a performer, but yet he allows us to make mistakes as we perform and our performances get better, regardless if it's math, or ELA, or science, or music, or even out on the football field. Practice makes perfect. He certainly has practiced, and he is perfect for us. So, with a heavy heart, I ask to take that. I'm going to ask John, do you have, I know that you had asked us some questions. Did you get your answers from us today?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. John's in the Hall of Fame meeting tonight. I didn't say he's in the Hall of Fame. I don't know if he's got voted in. He's just at the.
Next term.
He's just at the Hall of Fame meeting, so.
Oh, aren't you in the, in the next class year for that?
I hope so.
I think someone nominated.
We got you covered.
Resignations. Brittany McCray from Special Education Teacher at the Mitchell School, Hillary Pike, Central School, Cassandra Waden, Grade A Math Teacher, Junior School High School, Deborah Penn, Behavior Specialist, Jill Pickering. I'll just go through a quick, a couple of these. I'm not going to just tell you who they are, but one of the teachers has had a reading specialist certificate she received. She really wanted to be a reading specialist. A reading specialist position opened up in a closed district, so she went. We had another one that lives down near Barnstable, near, down to Barnstable School District. They approached her this summer. She had a, she was torn between the both, because she's driving back and forth. Time came that she just said, it's easier for me. We had a, we had a social worker who came and said, I'd like to try out your Behavior Specialist Program at the Mitchell School. She was retired. She came in, this is a full-time job, this isn't retirement. She said to Deb Dupre and myself, I'm going to stay retired.
No, I'm in a position.
Deb, was that what she said? She said, this is a little bit too much more than I thought. I'm going to stay retired. And asked us, do you have a two-day thing? And I said, it's not two days, we need a five-day.
Hopefully, the kids will behave the other three days.
Yeah. We did have an instructional support assistant on there, as you can see. That person wanted a different type of placement. The school gave her one placement. Sometimes people don't like the placements they get. It's hard for the principals to immediately move you when we don't have the spaces to be filled. And that's really where I'm at. I know that you wanted to ask a question. I don't know if you want to ask it offline or tonight, Jay Fallon.
Well, I just, Jay, is this going to hit you hard? Because I know you're already short a couple sped teachers.
Well, I think anytime you lose somebody, it hits you.
I mean, do we have anything in the, the height that we can?
We're working on it constantly. I mean, for us right now, we've got those two positions that we're interviewing for. I know I've met with both principals, talked with both principals, and we're working on it right as we're sitting here.
Are these sub-separate or inclusion teachers? You know?
In both cases, they were sub-separate.
The one, though, I do want to highlight the one at the Mitchell School. There was three students in the classroom. Two were already going out on an inclusionary setting and have now been placed in an inclusionary setting. There was one final student, the teacher wanted a self-contained room for herself, wanted a room for herself, found a position someplace else that could have that. This student has, going to go out and has been going out more and more, Deb, on inclusion. So, and we believe.
So, our kids aren't going to be hit too hard with this?
No, 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 no. That's a great way to put it.
Those are notes. I can get that to everybody, I thought.
Right. Are we covered? Right. That's the question, yeah.
Because I know we're still short one up here, right?
That will, that'll be, we actually just hired somebody for the position here.
You know the one I'm referring to.
And the constant openings is not unique to East Bridgewater. Many districts are faced with the same issues. There's just many more opportunities and not as many candidates.
I've just never seen it like major, you know, not major.
I had a teacher leave on the sixth day of school this year, because it's something closer to home. I mean, it's not ideal this time of year, but every district.
More options for people to work closer to their home, more options for people to maybe make more money, to advance.
Crazy, though.
So, yeah.
You'd think once you start on September 1, or whatever day, you ride it out for the, so you know, for the sped kids, it's hard to, you know, the traditions tend to be hard.
Unfortunately, I think at one time, that was, that was kind of the moniker, that you started this year, you did the year, and we go from there, but I think now it's as.
The world is changing.
Superintendent Williams said.
We do have, we do.
We do have a process for exit interviews. They have the option whether they want to fill out an exit survey, or they want to schedule a time to sit down with me. So, at any time, I do have either hard copies of the exit surveys that people filled out, or notes from our one-to-one face-to-face, really just for me to gather more information.
Well, exactly. As long as we're going, I don't.
People are choosing to leave, so that if there are things that we should be looking at or adjusting in the district to make it more desirable. But, you know, with most instances, it's just they've, you know, they're keeping one eye shopping around, and if something comes about.
I do know that Mr. Sylvia had written an email to parents yesterday, just about the concerns he's got a business and a tech. We did have a former business teacher who was here, who was actually laid off years ago, has reapplied here and would like to come back. From what I, my understanding is, she was a wonderful person, a wonderful teacher here, excellent teacher here, was at Pembroke Prior, got laid off at Pembroke, came here, got laid off here back, this was a while ago, so we have the opportunity probably to bring someone back in who knows our program. The other person at the, the other tech position, how that started is a week before The other person at the, the other tech position, how that started is, a week before school, the tech teacher came and said, my wife just became, got her, received her CPA and has been asked to join a firm in Maine. And I went up and interviewed with the DEM and I'm not teaching anymore, I'm gonna be, work with the Department of Environmental Management of Maine because I'd like to ride around on a snowmobile and help animals that are stuck and tell people not to race so much.
Are they still hiring?
He was a good, he was a young teacher. He was a good teacher. I think the kids really liked him. He did say to, to Dr. Williams and I how much he appreciated the support that we offered him and that the district offered him and that we took a chance on him when he was young because he was coming from an urban district south of us. And he said, I'm really glad you guys gave me a chance to get in here. And he really enjoyed himself. But, that's where he's at. He's in Maine and he's probably on a snowmobile today because I think they got two inches of snow the other night. So, good for him, he doesn't have to work for John Shay and be freezing. But that's really all I have.
I know, he is freezing us out of this place.
But that's what, that's what I have.
Where are we looking for tech teachers?
We are looking every place. We did, so, the classroom not, has not.
That's the niche, the time to fill.
It is. The certi, the certificate, I mean, you're looking for a dual certificate, it may be math and science, it may be math, business, it may be someone in the STEAM. It's hard to get them because they're just coming out. We, I know that people think that we just had subs in the room. We have had long, we've called them long-term subs because we've given them trial periods because many of the people that had come to interview were from outside the teaching profession. And some people think that the teaching profession is easy and that every student wants to be a techie and every student wants to be a entrepreneur. We had someone come in who had experience at the college level. This really wasn't the niche. We had someone came in who designed after-school robotics programs and STEAM engineering types of curriculums. Being in a class with twenty-eight to thirty-five eighth graders was not for them. That doesn't mean they don't do well in where they're at, it doesn't mean they're not good people and it doesn't mean that they have other opportunities out there. It means teaching is difficult. It's a different world and it's tough. And yes, the kids did start out without a teacher in there, so yes, the kids probably are a little bit more rambunctious at this time, but yet I think over the next couple of weeks, we had some, I talked to Mr. Sylvia today, he was actually at UDL Professional Development with some other principals. And he called me on the way out and he said, I have four interviews tomorrow. I've already had, I really think that this is, the first two are gonna be great and then we'll go to the other two and we'll see what happens. So, they're filling up positions and I know that you, I think you had one today or tomorrow, it's coming, and we hired someone yesterday. So, it's not for lack of us trying and it's not for us, a lack of us just keep, I mean, we are, we're on the wheel. We know that we've had a couple of people that went in and Jay came over and I was maybe at the Mitchell School and he said, this person could walk and go to Waymouth or Abington, can we get Dr. Williams to, you know, to sign? We've done that. We, you know, we've had Dr. Williams hold someone on the phone and say, yep, come on over, come right down now, come here, we'll sign you right now. So, I mean, this is, this is something that we're dealing with and there's a teacher shortage and there's a shortage all over. Dr. Williams is doing a great job on our subs. I know it doesn't seem that, but she rallied a company to come in and speak with us and I know that she'll be talking a little bit more about that, I don't know, about tonight or the next meeting to tell you that we brought in a company to work with us. It's hard. It is hard to find subs and even young teachers. It doesn't seem that they wanna come out and sub right away. They're sort of nervous after student teaching. All of us, I think we all went out and started subbing, you know, make some money, go to master, you know, get your master's degree, get out there, get your name to be.
We're competitive on compensation and.
Well, compensation, well, go ahead Gina. Gina runs that part, so I'm gonna.
No, no one's trumping us on that.
We're pretty, we're the same as Brockton.
How much should we pay a day for subs?
Pay seventy-five.
Seventy-five. So, in a survey over multiple districts, looking to see if that's, you know, what maybe is preventing us from retaining substitutes. One of the proposals that I was gonna make to the committee in the past was for us to progress the pay as people commit to the district. So, after substituting in the district for so many days, their pay would go up. Other districts have attempted that and through our conversations, it really hasn't had a huge impact. You know, a lot of the substitutes who are in the teaching field or looking to get in the teaching field want their names in multiple districts, thinking that that will help them to solidify a job if they have exposure in multiple districts.
Growth opportunity, is it just a full-time employment?
Right. And also what we're finding is people that are substituting often want a flexible schedule so they don't wanna commit to multiple days during the week. Because we even tried to entice people by saying, you'll be a permanent sub, you can show up here every day, be guaranteed because we have about an average of four people out in the district every day. And even that was difficult. People did not wanna commit to the five full days, they liked the flexibility of it. So, as the superintendent said, there's a new company to the, to New England, really, Insight Education and their partnering firm who specifically work with partnering with districts to secure recruiting and evaluating and sustaining substitutes. Through their research, they found that number one reason why we don't get substitutes to commit is because they don't feel a sense of belongingness to a district. Nobody's really checking in with them. When they walk in each day, it's a different environment, so they're not building connections with people. So, what their company does is they have an onsite supervisor who would actually be coming with them on their first day, getting them acclimated. They'd be coming back for visits, evaluating them, and they would be actively working on the recruiting. So, they would also be interested in coming to any events we have, like PTO events or events that bring community members out so that they can then possibly encourage people within the community to substitute and they would provide benefits.
Maybe we should talk about this offline because I don't wanna take too much time with it, but I'm just curious to know, is it, you know, young and rising prospective teachers who are looking to dabble or is it retirees who are looking?
It can be, it can be the full gamut.
People, yeah.
And my biggest concern was.
Employment pool, I would.
Right. So, it would run the gamut and my biggest concern is a lot of times when we have substitutes that are successful, we then wanna hire them as our teaching assistants or long-term substitutes and I didn't know if they were gonna fly out, you know, that we, and they said, no, that's their ultimate goal, is to get these people full-time jobs. So, at any time, if we're finding success with a substitute, we can then bring them on as a long-term substitute or a teaching assistant. And so, of course, Mr. Shay was involved in all the conversations so we could look at it from a financial viewpoint. And it's a little bit more than the seventy-five dollars a day, but what we were finding is, I think it's gonna come out to about a hundred dollars a day for a substitute that we'll pay. But what we were finding is we weren't retaining substitutes, so we were encouraging staff to use their planning time, which gives them twenty-five dollars a planning block and there are up to six planning blocks a day. So, we were ultimately spending much more than seventy-five dollars a day. And definitely, you know, it does a job on the culture within a building if people are feeling stressed and overburdened that they not only have their own teaching, but now they're covering for their colleagues as well. So, and we can, you know, decide as we make our way, if we sign on, we're hoping to sign on with them to start the beginning of November, we can tell them to slow up at any point in time as we monitor how much we're paying each month so that we're, we're not going over budget.
Just, I'm sorry, just real quick because I wanna wrap up.
I'll bring you the whole proposal.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we talked about it offline, but I'm just curious, you know, Insight probably has some kind of regional insight.
They're brand new.
They're brand new to the area. I believe they're in Illinois or New Jersey.
They're in New Jersey.
Pennsylvania. Newton Public Schools was the very first public school that they have tied on to in Massachusetts and that's just for this year. We actually met one of the co-executives at the MASSS conference this past summer. So, he's been out a few times, he's stationed out of New Jersey. So, they're in talks with us right now, Lynn Public Schools.
Worcester.
Worcester and maybe Hopington, maybe? So, they're very new to the area and they're also looking to maybe partner with a university to recruit college students to then also be part of.
And no, we're not giving anything to West Bridgewater.
No, no. Not at all what I was thinking about. So, is this for like long-term subbing positions or just dated?
Day-to-day.
Three teachers calling sick today and you can call them and they'll supply three people?
Yes. So, the research study that they did, once we first initially had conversations with them, it was through our frontline, which was formerly ASOP. So, we gave them all that data. They could see, you know, the trend and when there were high numbers of absences over the course of the year. They could see on a daily average how many absences we have. So, that way then they can plot out about how many substitutes they need to recruit for this district.
Okay.
So, our next meeting is a workshop meeting and then the next full meeting is a November twelfth meeting.
Well, if we needed to have a piece of a meeting to get it approved in time for her.
I don't.
We certainly could.
I don't think it's, the nice part about, I mean, we could bring it to the, we could bring it to any meeting by November twelfth. I don't think it's, first of all, it's cost efficient for the district, especially for the human resource part. We're spending a lot of time on the phone, we're spending a lot of time looking for people. Dr. Williams is spending a lot of time, can't, you know, can't get with, say, Jim McPartlin and Aaron Fisher and take a walk through and see what's happening with MAP or see what's happening here because working so much diligently on getting us subs. Number two, we looked at, we spent a hundred and, over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars last year from our budget on substitutes, whether it means maternity leave or whatever, wherever it was, but on substitutes. The conversation that we had with them was, I think John was like, we're not spending more than a hundred and thirty thousand, so we had that buffer. So, we know and like Dr. Williams said, they put that in there. We'll stop ya if we feel it's too much, we'll add, do more if we need more and we can do all those types of things. So, I think that, I think that what we're doing for the district is efficient, is fiscally prudent and I'm hoping that this group comes in and helps everybody. I hope that we're the first ones on the South Shore so that we get the, so that we can fix this because I know I did see Dr. Oakley today, they're hurting for subs. It's across the board. I mean, you get one maternity leave, that takes somebody out.
I taught two math classes today.
Yeah.
It was great.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, taking a principal.
You were never a math teacher.
Taking the principals off the floor is not what we, what we should be doing. Principals are there for instructional needs and they're there to keep the, from no cogs getting in the wheel. And that's something that we, I believe in, that these leaders need to lead their buildings. And so, we've had it happen up here. Assistant Principal has taught classes for the last couple of weeks, gone in and out your teaching. I know that Deb Dupre has taken a couple of classes herself over the last, you know, few weeks because they've, they've been down. It's not the right thing to do. So, we're trying to get it up, but we'll get it out here soon.
I can even through the email, send you all the proposal. And we still keep the, you know, ultimate control over deciding whether we want someone to return or not. The quarry and fingerprinting is still through our office so that we have our eyes on any employee that's gonna be coming into the district.
They do the legwork. We do the finish.
Yeah. I mean, like the superintendent said, the recruiting is so time-consuming and that follow-up, the evaluating and monitoring the effectiveness of the substitutes.
And it sounds like really the bulk of this work should be done through the administration, not through the school committee.
Right.
I ask all these questions.
Oh, no, I know.
Interesting, I was.
No, we're, and we're so fledgling at it. I mean, we just, it just happened last week. They came up from New Jersey, I think they sent the president up to meet and the vice president, one of the executives that we met with Tay, and they all came up, met with Dr. Williams and John went in and went through the financials and said, you know, this is what we have and we looked at it. What's better for us? Is it better for us to keep paying our teachers to give up their, their time and get into classrooms or is it better for us to bring in people to help keep support so we can get common planning time and so we can get out?
Well, then you're burning out your teachers too. I mean, that, that's the other factor involved, burning out your teachers when you take away that time.
So, going back to the current teacher vacancies, particularly at the high school level, and I know interviews are in process, but knowing how it's somewhat challenging, especially for those needs-type positions like tech, we're already almost in mid-October. How is the curriculum being monitored to make sure these kids are getting the credit, you know what I mean, for the class, say, for example, which hopefully won't be the case, but we can't find a teacher? And if you've had several long-term subs that just haven't worked out because the fit wasn't right, how is that curriculum consistent and being monitored to make sure the kids are being taught what they should be taught and earning the credit? Does my special make sense?
Yes. So, and we've had to do it before, so basically, once somebody is retained, we will then have to prioritize, you know, what standards need to be addressed and how we're gonna plot out the year to make sure that that happens. I think it was a couple of years ago, a science teacher was replaced, maybe in October, and it came down to prioritizing, especially with it being a tested class. With the electives, we have a little bit more flexibility, but it definitely will have to come down to prioritizing what set of standards and skills are going to be a priority once we have somebody in place. I think that person has to be part of that conversation though, in determining what that priority list is gonna be, but it will definitely put them under a little bit of a crunch, especially if it's a course that has like a part one and a part two.
Sure. And for those parents who got the email, you know, and their questions are in their head, their kids aren't gonna be left in a class, and I know this was in the email, but just to reiterate, they're not left in a class unattended without instruction. They're learning. Yes, there's a vacancy that's being addressed, but they're still learning and their kids will still get.
I mean, we acknowledge the fact that we have not had a, had a teacher in that classroom. It is not, you know, we'll take that, we'll take that hit. There's nothing I can do if I can't get the teacher. I can tell you, Mr. Sylvia and Mr. Bosch have been tirelessly in and out of that room. They've even asked Aaron Fisher to go into the tech room on a few occasions to go in and the kids love having Mrs. Fisher in there, by the way. But these, it's been difficult. But, you know, to piggyback on what Dr. Williams said, we'll prioritize the standards, we'll come back around and no one will be penalized.
Just so parents understand.
Yeah. And I think parents need to understand, we're not gonna penalize it. If we, if we're not doing the job, how can we penalize anybody? And we won't penalize the student. But if we can get somebody in there, I think we've got some good candidates on the way. I think once we get them in and we get a couple of weeks underneath our belt, I think we can really sit down with them and say, what are the standards? And I, you know, I'm sure that, I know for a fact that Mr. Sylvia and Dr. Williams have been constantly talking about this curriculum piece and what they're gonna do, so, and I've seen it. My final thing is Friday morning at eight forty-five, I'll be at the fourth grade reading TJ and the Haunted House. I'm ready. I practiced today in my room. I, I'm gonna, Deb, I'm telling you, I'm gonna slam the door, you're gonna hear the creaking of my feet, everything.
Love it.
I don't know what Dr. Williams has planned.
So, is it two different classes?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was wondering, like, is she gonna read and then I read? Are they gonna vote on which one read?
Alan, I did it too.
Oh, you want to compete, that's what you want to.
So, it's her two different ELA classes?
Correct. Two different sections, yes.
And Ms. Dupre read the other day and she was slamming doors and with heavy feet.
Absolutely.
You didn't rap it, Deb?
And they were whispering.
You did not rap that time, Teresa, no, no.
But I'm gonna do my best to do my fourth grade, you know.
Love it.
I, I've already told John that I've read it and I know the little boy's name is Seymour and I may even have a little joke for the kids on that, so, just gonna let you know.
You know the couple? You bet, you better.
I go after her, so I get.
Seymour, that's fourth grade. They love it, I'm sorry, they love it. I'm going for it. But I look forward to it and I love when teachers ask us to do things, it's fun and we enjoy it. I know that, I wanna speak for both of us.
Now, can we videotape it?
I think they were, they videotaped you and Andrew and sent it to us.
They took several pictures.
Still photos.
I'm using, I'm using on your goal sheets and then on your evaluations.
Perfect.[1724.37] No, we don't, we don't want still, we want live.
Oh, these are, these are videos, I've got a couple captions that Dana sent up to us, but.
That's great.
But I would turn it over to Dr. Williams, if you want to do your thing, but I think Dr. Williams would just like to preface some of the things that you can hear this evening.
As far as, yeah, sure. So for our first night of presentations for the strategic plan under curriculum and assessment, we have Mrs. McPartland, our facilitator of curriculum for the district, and Mrs. Dupre, our assistant principal at the Mitchell School. So they'll update you, as you know, with the strategic plan. This is one of our main goals and focus. They're going to talk to you about the curriculum review cycle and where we're at for content areas this year, as well as some of the initiatives that we're continuing and some MAP data and the correlation with the MCAS. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, good evening, thanks for having us. As Dr. Williams pointed out, we're excited to start a new school year. We're excited to really bring you some updates throughout the year on how we're doing academically as we are an academic institution, and we're focusing on constantly improving and growing in our curriculum and instruction. So we met as a leadership team over the summer. Before we started the year, we looked again at our strategic plan, and we looked at making updates, and one of the biggest updates that we did this year was really focusing on UDL. And the district has taken a focus on UDL, Universal Design for Learning. We have sent representatives to the UDL Academy. I was just there today, actually, learning information about UDL. As one of the assistant principals, just looking at what UDL is, learning as much as we can, and then looking at it in our classrooms and how teachers are utilizing it. So Jen's going to start by focusing on the history and social studies and foreign language framework. That is really our curriculum focus for this year. So, Jen?
So, thanks. So we're in year four of our curriculum review cycle, which is for history and social studies and also foreign language, which means that's where our huge focus is K through twelve, to look at our programming, the continuity of the materials we're using, and then also the integration of the new standards that came out in 2018. We still are going to focus a little bit on the health and wellness, which was last year's review cycle, only because their frameworks are in the process right now and will probably be finalized over the course of this year. So we're still keeping them on the back burner. We didn't just push them aside, but they'll be, we'll be looking over those throughout the course of the year as well. We have a number of pilots and reviews of curriculum materials happening right now in grades K through eight. We have two different pilots going on in each of those particular grade levels, so we'll have some comparisons. They range from, you know, Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt programs, McGraw-Hill, Pearson, and so on. But what they're, we're looking for is how closely they match the new standards, the new frameworks, and especially the Massachusetts ones in general. We also are looking at the high school level. We just, Dr. Williams and I were at a department meeting last week. We were talking with the high school to see what types of materials they need to support their curriculum. Their frameworks didn't change as much. What they'll be focusing more on is the integration of the literacy standards into their content area, where students need to know how to read document, historical documents, they need to know how to write historical pieces. So that type, those particular skills are what's going to be embedded into their curriculum moving forward. We also have some AP courses that are looking at different materials. I've listed them here. For our AP European History, we're looking at two different texts, and I just got a request today for AP US History, preview some other texts moving forward. The French and Spanish programs are also currently looking at two programs, the Avancemos and Bien Diet for French and Spanish. And they're also looking a lot of supplemental materials because there's a new focus with foreign language to be more immersive. It's no longer just conjugating verbs, and I remember writing those sheets out and like, like, I was twitching. But I think those are, I think now it's more about, you know, really getting students feeling the culture, feeling the language, a lot of speaking and listening, rather than just, you know, learning how to conjugate and jot things down. So they're looking at what types of materials could support them in that, in that shift. We, the state has had a ton of opportunities for professional development around the new history framework, so we've been making sure that all of the teachers in those areas are aware of all of them and have opportunities to attend anything that's been coming up. And we also have a couple of trainings coming up over the course of this month with those pilots at the elementary level, or actually up through eighth grade. So they'll be coming in as part of the pilot, they're free, they come and they train us because they obviously want us to use their program and like their program. So they'll be coming in and meeting with all of those teachers who are currently testing those out right now. And then in the spring, we'll, we'll look over the best materials, and what we're looking for is not necessarily a book that, a text that teachers would go from start to finish and look through and just, you know, page by page. This is like, how do we find materials that will support our standards is really what it is. We want to look at a different way of approaching our instruction, and it's going to be what types of materials are out there to, to provide the best support. So that's where we're at for this year.
Great. We're also going to continue focusing on writing again this year across the district, and the data is telling us that we need to. So we've done a lot in the past years in terms of analyzing what the grade level standards are and where our kids are in regards to those standards, and we do have a gap there. We're hoping to close that gap, and we'll continue to focus on that writing component at each school and at each grade level in various ways, depending on where they are developmentally. So, again, we're looking at growth. One of the things that we're focusing on is what the state is expecting us to do. The state is expecting our kids to be proficient in writing narratives, expository writing, and opinion writing, or argumentative writing when you get into sixth grade and above. So that's what we've decided to do, and we're developing some consistency with the central school. So we're focusing on creating three prompt, three writings, big writings, a term, one in each kind of genre. And so they'll have nine big writings when the year is done. And those are ones that they will go through the entire writing process and really focus on the structure of each type of writing. Already, Mrs. McPartland has been a part of our PLCs at Mitchell, and she has worked with the teachers to develop rubrics that go along with each of the types of writing, so that we also have the evaluation of the writing pieces consistent across the grade levels. So again, that's going to be our focus. I know we also have talked about kids writing more frequently. Our kids just need to write more, and they need to write on a regular basis. So we've incorporated writing into the special areas and asking special area teachers to have students write in their journals. I know at Mitchell, we've ordered journals for every student, which is really just a writing notebook, and the special area teachers are going to have the kids write in their journals at least two times out of the five-day cycle. And it could be anything from a quick write, tell me what you learned today, to a summary, or perhaps if they're learning in wellness, for example, talk to me about your nutrition habits and are you eating the food groups and what does that look like? So it could be really an assessment piece as well for the teacher to see what they have learned. So that's something new that we're trying this year.
Go ahead, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
At the high school level, looking at the need for more writing, and you talked about historical writing, and, you know, you have to be able to write across subject matter, but has any of the data, or is any of the data helpful in preparing for college readiness writing? Can you speak to that?
I think it is, and I think, you know, in terms of the junior senior high, our focus right now is looking at the literacy standards and incorporating that because there are so many different types of writings. When you get into the technical writing, or you look at a biology lab and that type of writing, it's so unique and distinct to each different field. What the state is telling us to do, let's focus on whether the kids can use conventions, look at correct grammar, look at the way that they are really constructing a piece and making sure that it makes sense organizationally. So there are things that are going on in Central and Mitchell that will translate into that more technical high school writing if it's developed properly as we go along. Do I think more needs to be done? Absolutely, and that's something that we need to continue to focus on as we get up into the upper grades.
And, and to that point, I mean, I just remember in college, the blue books. You know, you're just having to sit there and write and write and write. Speaking just as my own limited experience, I mean, I have a freshman and I have a junior.
Yes.
My junior hasn't done a lot of paper writing, so I'm already looking ahead to college saying, you know, how ready is he going to be to write these papers? You know, sometimes they're four and five pages. So, I know it's a building block, and, you know, Central will build on Mitchell, so on so forth, but what are we doing in the immediacy to help transition our current high school kids to be more college-ready? Or maybe they are, maybe he's just hiding his papers from me.
They do a lot of writing now in the Chromebooks, a lot of it is technology-based. We talked even today about our UDL Academy, about finding that balance between what's required of kids, whether it's at college or state assessments, and the physical act of writing, and what writing could look like differently. So, for example, students doing it digitally, doing it in different ways, and also developing the speaking as well. So yes, do we need to do more of that and find the balance? Absolutely, we do. And we need to develop that and build it in a more rigorous way for our kids. So our kids are prepared for not only college and beyond, but being well-writers is a way to communicate for kids. And if you can write well, you can typically speak well, you can typically read well. So it is something that we honestly need to do some more work on and we need to, to focus a little bit more on as well, particularly at this level.
And I'll share that with Mr. Sylvia too, about, you know, and the English department, because we have had conversations about stamina. I mean, and this is through all the grades. I mean, they, it's, it's a moan or a groan if you ask them to write anything. So I can see where it goes to those, you know, five-page essays, like, to actually have to sit down and do that is a chore. So that's something that, the stamina conversation is something that we've already been having going, moving forward.
Because when you sit there with a blue book.
Bringing back memories for you, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
What we all know about the blue book, we've been there. But it is something that they need to do. If the state's saying that they need to be able to compose an essay that's organized in a coherent manner, that's what we need to be working and striving towards and giving kids more practice and opportunities to do such. But also to model it for them, giving them structures. And again, do we need to do more work in that area? We do, and that's why writing is still our focus in our strategic plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think there has to be a little more vocal sound up here, I think you had a great, I don't see as much writing as I remember from my high school days.
I mean, I think education is different, the standards are different, so I see that piece of it. But I think, to your point, generally, you know, you need to be able to effectively write, you know, because that carries you on through life. You know, I write letters every day for work, you know, five and six-page letters, free, you know, just, so it's a skill that they need to carry into college and beyond.
Absolutely, there's no doubt about it.
Can you just elaborate on what you mean by the literacy standards? Is that the?
Yeah, it's really just the four standards of reading, listening, speaking, and writing. Anything that's connected to literacy, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something.
No, what happened is, over, every time the state has been putting out new standards over the last five or so years, they have started to embed the literacy standards into content areas. So a math framework would have literacy standards in it, where it used to be literacy standards were, oh, that's the English teacher's job because it's in the ELA frameworks. Now it's part of math, it's part of social, it's part of science, because there are such different types of writing and such shared responsibility. It's not just the ELA teachers. And that's a, that's a new mindset, and that's a new way of thinking for a lot of people who've been around for a while and teaching the standards the way they just focused on content.
Is there a standard for doodle notes?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's my new favorite thing.
But that's, that's kind of leading into what Mrs. McPartland's going to talk about next, and that is our MAP data. And the MAP data is giving us some good information as to where the kids are at in different areas, and we're continuing to focus on that. I know Mrs. McPartland has met with the building principals. I know she and I sat down the other day and just looked at the fall data, and we were just trying to glean, you know, what does it say to us? What is it telling us we need to do? So Mrs. McPartland's going to highlight a little bit about our MAP data.
Sure, we're in year four of MAP, so we've given it the good three-year go. The district testing window for the fall is going to close this Friday, so after that date, we will be able to have the actual, like, bigger picture of our district. But what's great about MAP, and I've said before, is that as soon as a student takes an assessment and it is completed, the data's there twenty-four hours later. So it's not like teachers have been waiting until now to look at this. Anyone who tested three, four weeks ago already has their data and is already making instructional groups. I know that interventions are already going underway at the Mitchell School and at the Central School, and that the data is already being used to, to create those activities and lessons and plans for individualization for the students.
Just one question about MAP. What grades does it come, K to what?
It's K through nine. K through nine is reading, ELA, but then also we continue with math all the way through the high school level, if you take integrated math, Algebra I, Algebra II, or geometry. So up through those courses as well. But for the ELA piece, we end at ninth grade. We have a number of tech programs that are in place within the district, Lexia, Freckle, Khan Academy, IXL, some paid, some are unpaid, really to just support the individual needs that we see that comes up with these reports. Something I just worked on, actually finishing it just up this afternoon, was MAP decided, has correlation studies out, and as soon as the next generation MCAS came out a few years ago, they had to wait a few years for us to have enough data, but they have started to correlate MAP scores, RIT scores, to MCAS projected proficiency. So they are able to tell you in a report what their projec, your student's projection would be for MAP, if, I mean, excuse me, for MCAS. So I took all of last winter's data just to see what they projected students would get on MCAS, and then I went through all of our MCAS scores and put them together, because I wanted to see how close. They say they correlate, but let's look. So in your packet, you do have a chart that I'll share what this data means. If you, for example, look at grade three ELA, it says sixty-eight percent. So that means sixty-eight percent of the students met the exact projection for MCAS that MAP put out for them in the winter. And the reason I picked the winter one is because the winter, to me, is the most impactful piece of data. At the beginning of the year, the teachers have this data, okay, where are my kids? I can kind of loosely group them. I'm doing these, you know, I've got them into certain intervention groups, individualizing instruction, but then all of a sudden, in the winter, you can really check if things are working. And that's when you start to make your shifts. So the winter, to me, you know, you're taking it in January, and in some cases, MCAS is in March, April, May, somewhere in that window, and then we don't take the last MAP until May and June. So for me, I'm like, that's what I want to see, is I want to know in Ju, in January, where are my kids looking like they're going to be on MCAS? Not that MCAS is the end-all, be-all, but it's, it's a reality right now. So for that third grade ELA last winter, sixty-eight percent of those kids did exactly what MAP thought they would do on MCAS. Twenty-seven percent went above and beyond. So that means, like, you could say, you could look one way and say, oh, their projection was off, well, I don't mind if it's off because it's on the lower side, they actually did better than we thought. But that also is a testament to the use of this data in the classrooms and the rock-star teachers who are saying, let me push these kids. I'm not okay with, you know, partially meeting expectations, I want them meeting, I want them exceeding. So to be ninety-five percent pretty much accurate right on, this, this data is powerful. And what this does is it's really helping us to just move kids forward where they start, not just looking at clusters of kids. It's, it's take every individual student and move them where they need to go, and it's all about growth. Now, although we talk about a lot of growth and, and things like that, and growth is our district, you know, that's our, our big push in the district is individual growth. I do have a list of students here that I want to mention their achievement. In going through the data, we had twelve students have perfect MCAS scores. So yes, we're looking at growth, and, and not every kid is going to be able to get a perfect score, but you can achieve a little bit, I mean, this is pretty great. So those students in, and I'm not going to read exactly what they got it in, but in Jonah Osborne, Victoria Perkins, Jordan Walkovic, Riley Dundon, Hannah McAlpine, Isaac Jordan, Ava Pino, Avery Stewart, Calvin Clement, Lily Turner, who got it in both ELA and math, Ariana Cofrin, and Brenna Wyper. So, I mean, they, I mean, that's, so, not to take away from all those students who individually may have grown, and we had a ton of students grow, but this is pretty cool achievement as well.
That's great.
All right, and finally?
Very proud of our students. That's amazing, good accomplishment. So what do we do with all this data now, and where do we go from here is kind of what our next piece is about. We have teams that are meeting to talk about the data, and we've decided to combine our UDL and district data team, so that we're really talking about, what does instruction look like, what is the data telling us, and where do we go from here to continue to make these kind of improvements so our kids can achieve to where they're going to go. So we've developed some teams. I know Dr. Williams has really been in the lead of this with the Inclusive Practices Network. We had a team start last year, we have a new team this year, and they have representatives from all three schools, so it really is a district initiative. And we're learning more about Universal Design for Learning. We're looking at that framework and seeing how can we remove barriers for kids so that they have access to learning? And it's in three different areas, and it kind of focuses on three different areas of the brain as well, but it's really about, how do we engage kids, and what does engagement really look like? How do we get kids to access learning so that everybody can really meet those high How do we get kids to access learning so that everybody can really meet those high standards? And we look at assessment, what is the output like? Does every kid have to do that blue book writing? Or are there different ways for kids to show what they know? Um, and maybe it's, it is the writing because that's your standard focus, but other times there are lots of ways, if it's content-based, for kids to show what they know, whether it's through project-based learning, whether it's through doing a podcast. I mean, technology has really opened up a new world for our kids. Um, so really, this is what UDL is about. And we're looking at our data team as well and saying, well, what does the data tell us that we're doing well with? And what are some other areas that we need to focus on? So we've combined the two together, and we're hoping to come with some good results from that. And we're also using, obviously, daily observations from our teachers. Those who are in the UDL Academy are starting to implement some of the information that they're learning, and really, hopefully, this should lead to better achievement for our students overall if we're all working together. Um, even as an administrator, our evaluators are starting to notice the UDL practices in the classroom, and if we find that there is something that they could be doing differently in terms of UDL, we'll have that discussion with them. Um, and people are starting to explore that and experiment with that, and that's pretty powerful. So we're going to continue to focus on growth, student-focused, looking at how we can work together as a district, as a superintendent is always saying. We're one district, we've got one focus, and we are really, really gearing towards achievement of our students and looking at how they can all grow, taking them where they're at now, looking at information that's baseline data, and getting them to grow as much as we can based on what the state is telling us that they need to learn at each grade level. And I, I'm confident that working together as a team, both with the teachers, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, Jen, Erin, um, it's really exciting. It's a great team, it's a great opportunity. Our teachers, like Jen used the word rock stars, we've got a lot of rock star teachers in this district, um, and we just need to continue to push them to continue to grow and do what they do well. So we're excited for a new year. We'll look forward to reporting a little bit more, um, on how we're doing in the curriculum and instruction realm as we go forward, and again, uh, looking to push our kids as far as they can go.
Throw a couple ideas out there, you know, pushing this writing stuff. Remember, and I don't even remember her name, I'm awful with names. The girl that won the, was it the Patriots writing prompt? It was a beautiful essay that she wrote.
Abby McCarthy.
Have we ever thought of doing something like that within the district at the school level?
They could.
I think that would, like, because I don't think kids, not all kids, I happen to have a writer as, as a child, so my kid writes flipping storybooks all the time, but that's irrelevant to the point, but I, I think an incentive to write. But in a less academic environment, I think is really good influence to get, just an idea, I mean.
I know the Rotary Club.
Form a pizza party or something, I don't know, but.
The Rotary Club does that, I think.
What are you in it with?
Yes, third grade, right?
But I think there's also.
Responsibility or the road to responsibility.
Abby Anna Coen wrote an essay last year for something, I can't remember, but I think it was on par with something like that. So I know that there are organizations that do these types of writing incentives too.
Or even if you've got that information out more.
Maybe Guidance has that information, I don't know.
Do they still, they used to come and bring dictionaries?
They still do.
They do.
Yes, they do.
I mean, we could possibly do something at K through 12, Jen, where it's the same theme from kindergarteners all the way to the seniors. And ask kids to write, um, and we could give something out or give a, you know.
John must have some Viking stuff in his office. He usually does, you know.
So long as it fits with the existing curriculum.
Right.
We don't want to be disruptive.
No. That's what I'm saying, that's why I would have to go for Jen. Because she sees them, K through 12, and she could, or pre-K through 12, but, and, and going along with the UDL premise of same theme, it's going to come and it's going to look a little different from kindergarten to, uh, see, two-years junior, I hope. Look a little different. What that looks like, but I think the, to that, you know, we'd like to do those types of things. Um, we are trying to stay more academically focused for the whole student. You know, we're, the student is almost cutting a piece of pie now, you know, academics to social and emotional, and to athletics, and to the band, and being part of the groups, and, you know, all of these things. But we really need to focus on the whole child. And academically, how are we going to get them to where they're going to be, and how do we support them as they do it? And I think that Jen and, um, Dr. Williams' group, uh, with Mrs. McPartland, Deb Dupre, and, and the rest of the principals, just doing a fantastic job on this K through, pre-K through 12, consistent modeling. Um, you know, and like you, you're saying, has it got to the high school yet? I think it's here. I think Jen can speak to that. She's in those classrooms, she is having those conversations. Um, I'm not. Um, I, I can go through my principal, uh, we can walk through a little bit, but Jen would have the more understanding, and she can relay that information that.
I'll drop off blue books tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. I think just by kicks and giggles, you should pick up a few and see what happens.
I, I still write.
I, I just want to say, I, um, you know, I, I think this is really impressive, um, having, you know, our strategic plan is aligned as it is. I mean, a lot of the districts around here do not have their act together nearly this much, and it's, I, people in this town need to realize, I mean, this is not stuff that you hear people get excited about a lot, like, let's talk about linemen and.
They don't.
But this is the stuff that gets me fired up about what's working well in a school, and it's a great, like, our curriculum review cycle is so well thought out and organized, and, and, you know, you have such a good grasp on what our kids need in terms of writing development, and, um, the MCAS scores, i, i, and the MAP scores bear out the good work that we're doing. So honestly, this to me is some of the most impressive stuff that we talk about all year long.
Oh, yeah.
And Dr. Williams, I know, had a lot to do with putting all this together, and.
Wow, it's all about.
My hat goes off to all of you for this. Yeah, this is great, so thank you. Appreciate it.
And I just, I just want to say kudos, and don't ask me what teams, I don't know these team names, but Gina gave us the UDL book, and I have been casually reading it, so I know a little, because I had no clue in reality when we first started talking about it, I, I couldn't conceptualize it in my head. Um, I have to say, what I'm seeing at home, obviously I'm not in the classroom, on the eighth-grade team that my child is on, is like, super cool stuff.
It's great.
Um, and, and again, I can only speak for that, for that one team, but I have to believe it's all over, and it, it's really cool stuff, and I, I, first of all, from a parent perspective, her grades are, like, way better. She likes coming here every day. And that's huge.
It is huge.
And I don't believe for a minute she's alone, because, you know, I'm at, I'm at these football games, not by choice with all due respect, um, and talking to a lot of her kids and stuff, and, and they all just seem much happier this year. Um, not that they weren't happy last year, but there's just a different vibe, and, uh, I think that's a credit to all the work you guys do. And, you know, the rock star teachers that we have.
That's right.
And there are many.
There are.
I think the, I think the data, Gina and I spoke today about just seeing the data. Um, when we, when, when you go out, look at programs, and, and Gina and Jen looked at MAP, and then looked at another program, and looked at another program, and looked at another program, they kept coming back to MAP. They kept coming back to it. For whatever reason, they kept coming back to it. Um, and one of my charges to them was, it's got to reflect what we do with MCAS, it has to reflect in the writing, and it has to reflect across the board if we're going to do something. Um, I think Gina, today, um, as we've talked about it, I'm realizing that now we're having a reflection that what we do in the classroom is directly corresponding to what we're doing on the MCAS or in a test. Um, two years ago, we did the GRIIT, when we first started this. Stick with it, stick with it, stick with it, tectuitiveness, and everybody said, that's not a word. It is a word. And, um, Jen went out and said, okay, how long are you spending on this test? And then they went around, they told teachers, we know how long, you know, Liz was on this test. Teachers started to take it more seriously. When people take things seriously, students respond, and now we're seeing the results. I think to Dr. Williams, and, and, you know, we often talk that, you know, half of the office is business and half of the office is instruction. Um, Dr. Williams is all business when it comes to instruction. Um, the strategies that she's implemented, the programs that she's bringing in, and the people that we're relying on to deliver the message, it's really coming through. This today, I think, showed us more than what we've seen, what, how we discussed it today, um, sitting there just going back and forth saying, wow. And then when I had asked Jen, I think at maybe 5:30 this morning when I was at the gym, I said, Jen, do you think we could have a correlation put together? And, I'm working on it right now. Said, by the end of the day, I'll have three to six. But I think, though, that, um, and I always put, I always put Gina CC so that she can blind copy them and say, I know, I know. But do something for her, wait, just get her off my back. Um, but I think they're excited. I, I believe, I'm excited to see the information, but I think when you're doing it, and you're in the rooms with the teachers, and all of a sudden they start to see it, um, you know, the principal is here this evening, you've got Jen, our facilitator, moving the programs, um, and showing people the time that you spend on task is coming through. And the, and the curriculum that you're, we're choosing is having a direct correlation. So, Tim, I'm glad that you brought that up tonight, because it is, it's, there's a lot of things working now. And it, we're, we might not see it at K through 12, but we are seeing it.
It's coming together.
Staff holding coming up, and it is.
That was well said.
So thank you, and thank you.
When are MCAS score, when are MCAS reports going out?
The junior senior went out.
Yeah, not my kid, someone in the bleachers.
The, the young grade should be going out, I'd say, within the next couple of weeks.
What, do they get mailed home?
Um, yeah, maybe it was just the retest letters.
Do you want to tell them about that? About the retest?
Um, so there, uh, with the test, the 10th grade test, um, there was bias in one of the questions. So, um, it would have affected those students that would have been eligible for some of the scholarships, the Abigail Adams scholarships. So they're giving students the opportunity to retest. Um, it won't change their actual MCAS score, but it may change their ability to meet that proficient or advanced level and make them eligible for scholarships. So districts are now rallying with that. Um, now, new set of, um, issues with dealing with the number of students who could potentially be eligible to retest.
Is the retake the new test or the legacy one?
Um, it would be the, the new test, right?
That was last year's 10th graders.
10th grade English would have been the legacy still, right? Yeah.
I think there was 20.
Um, I don't know the exact number.
Yeah, I think, what did she tell us yesterday?
I thought she said that the hundred and something that were eligible.
Their current juniors.
No, not all of them.
So we would be getting something.
Yes. You would, if it was your, if yours.
Mrs. Ferrier announced yesterday that students will be receiving letters, so there could be a letter. They were receiving them in Viking block.
Somebody's going to take the test, Ben?
Yeah. They were receiving them in Viking block. And, and just one other piece along this, you know, certainly a huge credit to Mrs. Dupre and, and Mrs. McPartland, and, and for all of those that work behind the scenes. But another big piece of it is, uh, the staff, and I feel like one of the things is we need their buy-in, and they need to see the deliberateness and the intentionality of our efforts so that they actually will trust us to believe that we are going to keep doing this. It isn't like, oh, here's the flavor of the month, and we'll just wait them out, and then they'll move on to something else. Um, and that, I think, has been a huge piece in the curriculum review cycle. Year one, uh, we had a lot of hesitation for people to come forward with suggestions of resources, materials, and trainings. And now, like, we're trying to hold the door back, um, because of people that are just chomping at the bit for their opportunity, for, um, their weigh-in of what resources, materials, trainings they can access.
We've got people already talking about next year, like, they can't wait for next year's review cycle.
Right, and then we had that little hiccup.
October.
Right. And we are kind of like playing a little balancing act right now because of the, the standards and, um, health and PE, uh, not being finalized in probably for the next couple of months. So we've done some purchasing for them, but we, we've still got some to do, and of course, Mr. Beatrice keeps emailing us about, how much more do we have? Um, and, you know, um, giving our full attention to one area or one or two areas each year has helped us as well, instead of just kind of, uh, piecemealing things, which I think in the past, that was what a lot of it would be, and we would like question, like, what did we really do for that content area? Because we just maybe did a little bit for each of them, and it didn't have as much of an impact, so. Um, and the UDL, I just, I, I feel like it's the staff who have really propelled that. Um, they're excited about what they're doing, they're excited about sharing. I actually was in the PD Academy meeting this morning, and, and one of the teachers said, can I just show you what I did the other day? Uh, and was just super excited about it. So, um, they're the ones that are living it, and they're the ones that are getting it to the students, um, much more effectively than we could ever do, so.
It's nice to hear from a high school perspective, from a parent point. Um, as a former high school teacher, we do, we teach in silos, um, at the high school. We believe that we're individuals, we believe that we can do it our, on our own, and that no one, I know it better than anybody else. This is, I think, the UDL, I believe the UDL, and listening to conversations, um, with Jen and, and Dr. Williams as I stand on the doorway at times, or they let me sit there, um, they're talking about this, and, and people are getting more and more ingrained and getting more involved across, and doing cross-sections, cross-curricular activities, cross-curricular writing and reading. It's important that we do that because we're not alone. And, um, high school, you know, high school's a different animal than the elementary schools. You know, they're two different, they're two different animals, however, they're the same kids. So, um, and things are changing at a rapid, rapid pace. You know, at the Mitchell School, we could see a, a child have, uh, no issues and then hit the fourth or fifth grade and have issues. And it just, it may be social, emotional, it may be some reading, it may be, it just, and then when they get to seventh and eighth grade, again, it hits again. So there's different time periods, there are different adjustments that we're making, but I think this has proven to be, um, something that we're going to stick with and, um, that's working for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Ellen, you have Jay.
Thank you, great job.
Excellent job.
Thank you. We have, um, Mr. Jay Phelan here, Director of Special Education. He was supposed to be listed on the agenda, and he was erroneously omitted, but he's here with us. Welcome.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here. First, first I'd just like to say that, um, you know, based on their presentation with both the superintendent and the assistant superintendent have said, I absolutely agree. I think the, the whole child approach is, is working here. Um, when I talk with principals and I talk with teachers, and I'm sitting in some of the IP meetings, I'm hearing teachers talk about MAP data, about growth that all students are making, including students with disabilities. It may not be at a, at a, at the level that, that you're looking at, maybe a student who doesn't have a disability, but the growth is still coming. And that's an important piece, and when teachers start to talk about that, it really starts to get you excited, because you, you know that they're using it, they're using it in the classroom, they're accessing it, and they're using that kind of conversation amongst themselves about student growth. The other thing is the UDL piece, that universal design. I'm starting to hear teachers talk about how we better assess kids at all levels. You know, do we, do we, to, to not continue the joke about the old blue books, but the old blue book days are gone. Do we have a student who has a language disability who maybe can't put all of their ideas down on paper, but they can put them into a podcast, they can put them into a drawing, they can put them out into, into a choice board kind of piece? Those are the, are the universal design pieces that teachers are starting to talk about and are working on and developing at all levels across this district. So, I mean, it's incredible to see how it's all tying together for all kids and all learners. So, that part being said, I'll, I'll get off my silk boxer. So as far as special education goes, currently, we, we have 420 students who are on IP's, 20 of those, um, currently being students who are, who are being serviced outside of our district. Um, those are students who, who, because of their disabilities, we're not able to service them in the district. Um, we, we continuously try to work and develop our programs so that we're able to do that, but in some cases, you know, we cannot, and in some cases, we have students And in some cases, we have students who move in who are already out of district, and we have to honor that. We're, we're always looking at our programs, and I mean, just to go back to earlier when we were talking about staffing, one of the things that we look at is supporting our kids. All of our kids have been supported during this time. Some of our teachers have, we have one particular teacher who, who's kind of done dual duty. They, they took a leadership role in the district and have done some dual duty for the last couple of weeks. But we've also made sure that, that, that teacher's going to be replaced by one of the new hires, so that they can just stay in their leadership role. When we looked at some of our numbers at the, the other levels, there were some times that we weren't having so students who were, we had small numbers, and we were able to move them so that they could, some of our students had inclusion needs, some of our students had, had more, some lesser supports than they had in past years that were needed, so we were able to kind of adjust that. That's what's really kind of helped make sure that all of our students are, are supported throughout the year. And we'll continue to do that as we look at our numbers, we look at what's, what's best for our kids. Again, looking at that whole design, using that UDL, using that MAPS data, using all of that information to look at that whole child. So, I don't know if there's any specific questions you have for me, I can.
CPAC meetings still going on?
CPAC meetings are going well.
What nights are those?
We generally do them on Thursdays. We just had our, our Basic Rights presentation by Kathy Hickian. I'd like to thank her, she comes out of the Brockton Arc and the Office for Children. Both, all three of the CPAC President, Vice President, and Secretary, Ms. Janine Martin, Ms. Nancy Gardner, and Ms. Missy Schrader were great. They, they were able to coordinate that, get it together. I encourage anyone to come on out to our CPAC. We meet on Thursdays. Our next meeting is Thursday, November 7th, so feel free.
So, in the evening or morning? I know they're toggling to try to get more people in.
Right, so we try to adjust them so that, so that we can get our numbers in. I want to say, off the top of my head, the seventh is a day meeting. Usually, they're at 11:00 here in this building.
Jay, when you say 420?
Mm-hmm.
Does that include 504s, or that's a different animal, right? Because that's not a sped.
I, I generally don't put that number into our 504s.
I didn't think it, that's why I wasn't sure, because it's different. Relax.
Well, 504 is, is an accommodation plan. It's a regular education initiative for any student.
Exactly.
Right, for any student who may need some extra supports. That's where the UDL really falls into place for those kids. In this district, that, that's done by our Director of Guidance. She oversees that. So, when I'm saying that 420, I'm talking about just students with IEPs. As all our kids, all our kids.
Jay, you and I had a meeting today. Can you just briefly talk to us about following the student with the IEP so that we'll look like we're more in line with the state average? Because we, we've always tended to go high. Jay's been researching this, I've asked him to, to look into this, and I think he's.
So, one of the things is, we're a little bit higher when you look at our percentages. The state average right now is 18.2%. We're at a 19.1. We're looking at, at all of our kids, we're looking at, at all of their services, and we're looking, again, at how do we best service our kids with the supports in place? You know, do we have students who, as they're coming through a reevaluation cycle, who need more accommodation support, potentially looking at a 504 or something along those lines, rather than IEP support? We're also looking at making sure that our classes are continuing to go into that inclusion model. We'd like to eventually move into that true co-teacher model, as we're bringing on more teachers, going into a really effective dual teacher or co-teacher model.
And would that eliminate all sub-separate?
Well, that's your dream. It's never going to eliminate all sub-separate. I mean, to be frank with you, there, there are students who need, who need those services and need those supports, and to eliminate those completely, we'd do those, those students a disservice.
And Jay's office is doing a better job following the student with the IEP, so if they do come off the IEP or they are, which will help us truly define exactly, are we on the state average, or are we really above? We have some students that he found, as, as he was going through, that are lingering in that IEP area, that are no longer on IEPs or have graduated onto like a transitional program, which he does not, he does not count into that count. So, it can bring us right into the state average, which you have, the state's coming in again to look at you.
State is coming in, in March, to do what's called a tiered focus monitoring.
What is that?
Tiered focus monitoring is part of, so every six years, all the districts go through a series of audits or assessments. So, you're looking at, it used to be called the old CPR, Coordinated Program Review. Now that the state has moved that to, the department has moved that to a tiered focus monitoring in a six-year cycle or a three-year cycle. We happen to be in our three-year cycle. They'll come in, they'll look at our programs, they'll tour around, they'll talk to our staff, they'll talk to parents. They may actually talk to CPAC members as well, depending on, on how many days they're going to be here. They'll, they'll sit in some classes, they'll look at some files, they go through it all. And then they can give us a report and let us know how we're doing. Is any different than the CPR process? More of it's done online now. More of it's done uploaded and online. So, all your files, the, the old days, you used to have to kind of physically have the files and hand them to them, and they give you a list of names. Now, it's all kind of done online, and they want to see it electronically. Okay. And then if there's any kind of discrepancies, then they'll kind of look at that hard copy file. We're also going through a transition in our department, too. In our computer system, we used to have two different student management systems. One was for the district and for the students, just as student management, and then we had one for IEPs. We've since combined those, we've been able to combine those with, with School Brains, with our student information system. So, we went through, our teachers went through a round of training at the beginning of the school year so that they can see that system. It's a little different. I mean, writing an IEP is writing an IEP, to be frank with you, but they're, but they're, the way that it looks and its presentation. Everything I've heard back from both regular education staff or general education staff and special educators, they're all seeming to enjoy it. They're, they're able to access it easier, they think of the layout's a little bit better in, in, in School Brains.
I know they like that the IEP pops right up on the main screens to the kid now, which, I mean, there are teachers who wouldn't know, okay, it was on, I shouldn't say they wouldn't know, but it would be harder for them to know because we have the dual systems.
Correct.
So, I know that was one of the things.
I just think it's, it's a better access and it's a quicker access for all educators. Again, going back to that whole child, it's a quicker access for everybody.
Well, especially with the inclusion, and the inclusion, from what I'm hearing.
Going very well. I was out in classes the other day, it's going pretty well.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good day. Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay. This is a reminder, we have October 22nd, 2019, is our workshop to review the new DESI Superintendent Evaluation Model, and also to review and decide on the FY19 MASCE resolutions and a proposal to amend the MASCE bylaws. And that is included in your packet tonight, just to make sure you review that before our meeting on the 22nd.
Can I ask a quick question about the workshop? So, at that meeting, do we approve Liz's goals for the year? Can we get a look at them ahead of time, or is that something we'll get?
So, we have a supervow subcommittee meeting on the 17th at 9:00 in the morning. So, that's a few days before.
Yeah.
So, you could, you could get it.
Yeah, so you can, you send it out to us after that meeting?
Yeah. I can't, I can't leave.
Well, not exactly after the meeting, but before.
Well, you know what I mean.
Right.
After that, but before the other one.
Yep. Yeah, that would be actually with, I can have Barbara put it right with the agenda.
Okay, that'd be great.
And I don't see anyone here for public comment. And, oh, I thought we would get out of here by 8:30, but it's close, very close. So, I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from September 24th, 2019.
Moved.
Moved by Teresa, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I would take a motion, oh, so it's one abstention and everybody else voted, so it's not unanimous. Not, I know.
You're going to write it down.
Joanne's going to watch it. Well, Joanne's going to watch it back, probably.